Good evening. Tonight's the January 14th, 2013 Reinbeck Town Board Meeting and we have -- can you hear me without the mic? You okay with this? So tonight is reorganization meeting for the town and also at the end we'll have a county meeting for 2013 as required by law. So we'll start tonight's meeting without a pledge of the power of due responsibility.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so good evening and we'll start with some announcements. The town tax collector has received the tax warrant rolls from the county and will mail the tax bills out on January 25th. The taxes may be paid out without interest from February 1st through the 28th and then 2% until -- 2% interest if you don't pay until March 31st, okay. 3% interest until April 30th and a 4% interest until May 31st and then I get extra if you pay after that, so, just kidding. The town is recruiting a part-time seasonal coordinator for our summer recreation program. Please check with the town website for information. That's 876-3409. Item three, there is a vacancy in the following committees and boards. Board of Assessment Review, we have two vacancies and the Chair. We also have vacancies for two people on the website committee, which is going to be very active over the coming year. We have vacancies in the Aging Committee, the Budget and Finance Committee, two, the Conservation Advisory Board, we have one vacancy, Recreation, one vacancy, and the Reinbeck Waterfront Committee, we have four vacancies, I guess. So you can call Town Hall 876-3409 for that. Town Hall will be closed for Martin Luther King's birthday on Monday, January 21st. We have an approval of the minutes from December 20th, special meeting, and there's a motion and second to approve.
Motion?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It's so moved. Okay, next item is a presentation from the Spain Agency from --
Tom, have you finished with announcements?
Uh, yeah.
I have a couple of announcements.
Okay, all right.
First, if anybody is contemplating new replacement, I would be happy to talk to them about what is involved. The second announcement is we have this workforce housing program at the Gardens. We are prepared to market units if any Reinbeck resident or somebody connected with Reinbeck is interested in the Gardens. We do have a subsidized program where units can be purchased below the offering price for qualified individuals. So if anybody here or in the audience is interested in finding out more about the program, our marketing agent is Hudson River Housing. Our town clerk can put anybody who is interested in in touch with them. I think the Gardens office in the town can also do the same. It is a good program and we look forward to allocating these units to people who are involved with Reinbeck. There is a hierarchy of eligibility, preferences will go to town employees, teachers, firemen, policemen, people who work in stores in Reinbeck, people with relatives in Reinbeck, residents of Dutchess County. So again, if anybody is interested in the Gardens, we do have this program.
I got two, just real quick. The ice skating rink is open, so if the weather cooperates, we're going to leave the gate open when it's skateable and you can just go in. You've got to be out of there by 10:30 at night till the lights come on around 4:30. The other one is the dog park. We've gotten through the, pretty much through the planning board in Red Hook, so we'll be having a public meeting in February for anyone that's interested in working on the dog park.
I have some fencing for you, Bruce.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we have another announcement, or John, were there two more? Is that it? That's it, okay. All right, we have a presentation tonight from Spain Agency representing Neimer and it's Brian Miles and you're on. We don't have a microphone for you, but if you could stand close to that mic, it'd be great, on the table, okay? Just for the interest of the pin.
Should we tell them that it's off the agenda?
I think you ought to do that.
Yeah, let me just say, one of the board members had put a, requested that an assault weapons resolution or discussion had been put on. It wasn't really discussed before that. It was a surprise to me, but it's not going to be on the agenda today. Some of you have told that too, but if there's going to be no comments to it today, then is there going to be any comments about it today? Are you going to wait till the next meeting or?
I would like to put it on for the next meeting.
So we're going to put this up for discussion for the next meeting?
Yes.
And in that case, we won't discuss it today?
Right.
Okay, so just so you guys know, it's going to, might be a meeting until 9 o'clock.
But you're welcome to stay.
Yeah, we won't be talking about it today, in that case. Okay.
When is the next meeting?
The fourth Monday is the, what is it?
28th.
28th, so the 28th will come up.
January 28th.
Right. I've got some calls from the media about it and they aren't here because I knew it wouldn't be on today also. I just couldn't control the comments of the board, so it's pretty clear it's not going to be part of the agenda. Okay, okay.
Monday to 28th?
Monday to 28th, same time. Okay, all right. All right. Brian, Brian Miles, you're on. Thanks.
Thanks, thanks for coming back.
I just want to hand out a few things out, just to, summary of where we left off last time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Brian Miles from Spain Agency, Reinbeck, and nice to see you again. We represent Neimer, New York City, Jersey City. What I just handed out this evening was a summary of the proposal that we laid out a little over a month ago and in terms of the pricing of the different coverage limits available for umbrella as well as some local municipalities with umbrella to state here. I wanted to wrap, I know there's been some discussion back and forth about Neimer and liability, and I just, if they're able to answer any questions, I just want to move on.
We asked Mr. Miles back because at our last meeting, the last one of the year, there were some questions raised about coverage and about assessments that Neimer could make and we selected selective until we could have the questions answered, so.
There was no gap in coverage.
Right, we needed to vote on our insurance, so.
So one of the questions was, and I saw the YouTube video of the December 20th meeting.
Yes.
And one of the statements was made, I think it concerned the board that administrative hearings are excluded under Neimer. That is totally incorrect. Neimer covers administrative hearings, both under the EOC and the Division of the American Labor. They have different endorsements on policy, triggered coverage, depending on what entity administrative hearing is held by. The reason for that is that the EOC hearing, they are not able to regulate fines as the American Division of Labor, so there's two coverage triggered under Neimer, they come both administrative hearings and I think that was a statement at the last meeting, I think that concerned the board. So I just want to be clear that Neimer does cover that. And the other, I think, statement was made that concerned the board was what happens if there's a big claim up in --
Up and down the Hudson, right.
That could impact Neimer as a company. Neimer purchases what they call reinsurance, so they layered their exposure off to different insurance companies at certain levels. So an apartment claim, for example, there was a big claim upstate, Neimer's exposure as a company is limited to $250,000 and the rest is reinsured. You have a big liability claim, that exposure is limited to $650,000 and the rest is reinsured. So with Neimer being in business for 20 years, they've never had to issue an assessment or a levy against a municipal authority. So I think Neimer's built up approximately $54 million surplus to pay for those claims within their retention level as well as collecting the appropriate premium per year from all its members. So they slowly built up their surplus over the years and they were, in the early years when the municipality joined up, they had a capitalization requirement, which was a higher percentage of this today, helped build up the surplus for the company. So they were prudent and conservative in their funding approaches and they had built up the surplus and they have saved on some of those catastrophic claims that were mentioned.
So while you could assess the towns, you feel like the $54 million is enough to ensure that you don't?
Correct. Not only is it $54 million, they're also collecting $30 million a year premiums from all the different members and that's enough to kind of pay for all your claims as you go throughout the year. And every year they seemingly add, you know, three or four million dollars to the surplus and it's grown up to $54 million over the years. And they've done so well, as a matter of fact, they've been giving back the money of the last four years to the members that have paid into capitalization, a return capitalization program, so while still maintaining an A rating by A and B, they may be able to give back money to the members. And so far, they've given back all the money that members have paid in to help capitalize the company.
If I could ask you a couple of questions. This thing you passed out, this is what the umbrella amounts?
Yes, that piece of paper indicates the role of municipal municipalities, that just counts.
And this other sheet, it breaks down premium into property and boiler and --
Yes, things like that as well as public officials. Then that's a subtotal and then there's three different options for umbrella.
Now, the breakdown though, why is that relevant to us? We're covered up to presumably the amount of the policy.
Yes, I was just --
Okay, that's how you get it.
I have heard you discuss it.
And I guess the other question I had in comparing your rates to selective, it looks like selective was better, lower rates up till about three years ago. And three years ago, Neimer rates are much lower. Are you aware of that? And why was Neimer more expensive?
Neimer's rates are predicated on their history, just municipal business. Their rates are not predicated on market conditions or hard market or soft market. And I think prior to this, we were in what they call a soft insurance market where the pricing was low. Private insurers would private bill capital, build surplus by premiums, investing it. And sometimes these insurance companies have different missions to generate premium. So I think we were in a soft market cycle, so the traditional marketplace was lower in premium. Neimer's continually grown through that concrete, they've written a lot of accounts. In this particular case, maybe selective was more competitive a few years ago, but Neimer's rates, they look at them every year and they shoot how they're doing as a company and their specific group.
Over the last three years, Neimer is more competitive, lower rates than selective, which to me means we watch rates and shop it quite frequently.
And I did do a little research because I was asked, you know, what would be the appropriate limit to involve. I did check with Neimer, they insure 687 municipalities, they've had a business point years, probably had over 8,000 insurance renewals. They've had 11 claims in the history of the company that have exceeded $1 million, none of them going over $2 million. And some of the things that I'd like to review with the town are certain statutes protect the town from liability. One is the town's party notice laws. Would you like to take a look at that, make sure that's up to speed? There's other laws, recreational use statute that grants immunity to landowners, not only municipalities, but private landowners where people coming on your property, the horse step ride or sleigh ride or ice skate, and that's been a big help for municipalities. And the other one is the snow plowing law called the weather who we did, which provides limited liability for municipalities while they're snow plowing. In order for a municipality to be liable of a snow plowing incident, you have to be considered reckless behavior behind the wheel, so.
Does it mean we make the decision at the last meeting to change the umbrella?
Yes, and we also asked for a recommendation.
Yeah, but it sounds like 510 is even generous.
Yes, yes, from our experience, it would be.
Is that what we voted for last time?
That's what we settled on, but Red Hook is 3.6.
Well, I was just trying to give you a little background of why, you know, certain things that help protect municipalities from some of the bigger exposures that other people face.
One of my concerns is the difference between us and Red Hook is that we have the waterfront, we have a bridge that crosses over a mass, railroad tracks, you know, you have a bridge that could potentially go over top of two trains at one time, which would be 600 people, and a ramp that goes down to the riverfront, and then we have docks and so on, which Red doesn't really have as a town park and not many communities do along the river.
No, it's a nice facility out there.
It's unique, but the liability is huge. We may have a large boat that is chartered and comes up to our dock and 100 people go onto it and that goes out to the river if something happens and there's some sort of liability there for us.
I think the liability would probably end, we won't say board the boat, but I think the liability would probably be on the dock in a trip and fall situation.
It just seemed to me like we had a unique scenarios here that were beyond a lot of the Dutchess County ones.
We insure a lot of riverfront towns off through Westchester.
And then that's my second comment, is that we're a membership of, a group of townships that are Westchester towns, which, in which case, if we had a hurricane that created a substantial amount of damage in those towns, then we are somehow responsible in the funding of that as a member of this.
Well, as I explained earlier, that's a good question. If there was a hurricane, and we've had three so far with Neimer in the last four years, that's considered one occurrence. So we've had multiple claims through a lot of the towns and villages, you know, these multiple storms, and that's one occurrence, that's one $250,000 hit to Neimer, the rest is reinsured. So you'd have to have a hurricane coming through every day of the week that really had an impact on Neimer's financials because it would be one $250,000 hit to Neimer.
I'm comfortable with the 510. I think that's substantial.
With the pool, you know, we have probably more risk than a lot of towns, you know, with the swimming and everything. We did have a fatality years ago in the pool. Is that, is the 510 adequate with that, do you think? I think it is, but.
Yeah, we've had unfortunately some instances where we've seen some fatalities in recreation and feel awful with that one.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it, thanks.
Out of order now, we've had heard the discussion, maybe we can vote on what we want to do, because I know later on in the agenda, there's an action item, but maybe we can take out some --
I mean, certainly if you want to suspend the rules and take a vote on that, certainly.
I would move that place the insurance with the number of 40,000 at the umbrellas that you voted on at the last meeting.
And just, Elizabeth, if you'd go off the top of your head, was that a $12,000 savings or what was the savings?
20.
$20,000 savings, okay. I'll second it.
I'm a, okay, motion and second, any comments? My comment is, I'm not so sure. The $20,000 is fine, but the exposure might be substantially more. I'm a little bit concerned about it at this point in time. I'm not just confident that it is the right move. I've done a substantial amount of background on it. The last time we opted with an independent insurance auditor who recommended Spectrum? No, wait, what's the name of it? Selective, I'm sorry. And so I'm going to oppose it at this point in time, so. Further comments? Okay, we have motion and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, and it's so moved. Returning to the regular order of business, the reorganization meeting.
Thank you for coming back up.
We're going to provide coverage for the 14th, is that what you'd like us to do?
Yes, bind for the 14th.
And you said you had an extension to the 14th or you want us to go back to the first or?
Well, I don't know how we would.
Normally, you know, if they extended it to the 14th, you would just pick up coverage.
It's, we have a per day coverage. We would have to terminate our coverage with selective and start it with you. And I think that's something we'll let our bookkeeper, who's our business manager, know and we'll have her call your office, Shelley Day. We'll call you tomorrow to coordinate it.
Yeah, sure.
So that, we just don't want any coverage suspended.
Yeah, we'll be able to work that out.
Thank you.
So John, are you going to talk to Shelley and tell her that she has to cancel selective and find out from selective to what date they have insured us?
We, they, were there?
Or Brian, and you would pick out a date for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. Business before the board is a resolution establishing the order of business for the town board meetings. That'll be tab two in your book with motion and second.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Item two, resolution establishing the 2013 meetings and times and locations. That'll be tab three. So motion and second.
Motion.
And all in, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Item three is a motion establishing the holiday schedule, motion and second.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is it about the holidays we're talking about?
Yeah.
Are these the same as the current?
Yeah. Same as current, but the Good Friday discussion is listed in here.
So that may be changed depending on where we come out on that.
Yeah.
Item four, is that all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item four is a motion authorizing the supervisor to file the 2012 Supervisor's Annual Report to State Controller's Office. Motion and second.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Item five is a, it's a matter of law to appoint the deputy supervisor by the supervisor, which should be Councilman Washburn. Item six is resolution designating the budget officers. And that would, I believe is a matter of law also. Rule of law, isn't it? You know anything different than that or no?
You don't have to vote on it.
I don't, as far as I've learned, yeah.
Oh, you just designate?
Yeah.
Okay.
I remember this in the past, that we got this in the past?
No.
And what does the budget officer do?
Well, supervisor's the town budget officer.
Right.
And then the deputy supervisor would sign in the absence of.
You have Bruce here too, what is Bruce doing? I thought you're doing the primary budget.
Yeah, but he's the deputy supervisor and he would, it's just designating the budget officers, so it's not.
I think what he's saying is if, if he couldn't do the budget office responsibility, then I would do it.
And it allows you to sign in his absence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
But that's a different resolution.
And item seven would follow through on the same. Item eight would be designating the official newspapers to the town, which we have as the Daily Freeman, Kingston Daily Freeman and the Journal, is it?
Did you miss one? You missed signing checks?
Well, that's the same as basically.
I'm sorry?
It's really the same as six, yeah.
Observer is new, if you want to discuss it.
You guys have the Observer down for the?
No, Tom, that's actually new. I thought you guys might want to discuss it.
Okay.
As a backup.
Yeah, what do we have previously, the Freeman and?
2012, the Freeman, Freeman only for 2012.
No, we had the Freeman and the Hudson Valley News.
Oh, and the Hudson Valley News, okay, so they're not around.
Leave it the same?
They're not around?
I thought, I thought they weren't around anymore. At least we're not getting it around here.
Observer's our new local paper, I think that would be great.
I agree.
For those of us at the end of the table, we cannot hear your discussion, we've got to talk louder.
Observer and the Freeman, but I do, I think, I'm okay with going with the Freeman because it's less expensive, but when we need to reach out for a broader, I want us to go with the Kipsey Journal just because it has much more coverage and it is local for the county, like when we're looking for positions to be filled and stuff. So I'm for when we just have to post stuff, going with the Freeman, but I want to be able to have that option when we need a wider.
Well, why don't we put three on, the Journal, the Freeman and the Observer?
It doesn't mean we have to use all three for public notice, do we, John? Okay, that'd be great.
I don't know.
Is everyone okay with that?
No, we do have to use all three. If we designate them as the official newspapers, then we've got to do all three for public notices, because that's what we're saying. You can't expect people to go out and buy the three different papers to see whether, which one we posted it in.
Okay, fair enough, Bruce. I'm just bringing that up for in the future when we may have to go.
I would, with an hour.
I'm okay doing all three, but, but.
It'll cost us, it'll cost us more.
Yeah, I don't pay for all three. Let's do the two and we can always run an ad and pay for it.
Got it, okay.
So we'll do the Journal and the Freeman?
The Observer and the Freeman as listed here.
Good with you guys?
Fine.
All in favor, aye?
I like the, I want to support the local paper.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's so moved.
Do we didn't motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Item nine is designating the official banks as Citizens Bank and M&amp;T Bank, motion and second.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to vote no.
Why's that?
Because we don't have any money. I know the town clerk has money in the Citizens Bank, but the rest of us don't.
Right.
And.
What do you mean, the rest of us?
We, according to the bank accounts, we don't have any money in Citizens anymore.
I thought that there was a town, the town clerk.
Town clerk account is the only one.
I said that though.
Yeah.
Where is Citizens Bank?
It's right by Stop &amp; Shop.
Yeah.
Oh.
So.
The bank, we won't keep it?
You're right.
So I've got a problem with having all our eggs in one basket, so that's, that's why I vote no.
Well, would you vote to put more in, a different bank, or I don't understand the?
Well, we have, we should be checking the banks every year to find out what they're paying. We should even be checking quarterly or at least half, you know, semi-annually. And we should be going with those banks, but we shouldn't be in one in case it gets in, completely in one, in case it gets into some kind of a problem. And I know there's, there's insurance and everything else, but if we don't have money in it, we're not diversified at all. So that's why I have a problem with this.
Well, we could, you know, as I'm told, we're going through a motion that's kind of ceremonial, but we could always change this, as I believe throughout the year. If we have a, if we find something, we could always change that.
Okay, well, you had enough votes.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
You're reminding us that we have to diversify and split up our.
Check rates.
Well, not, not only check rates, but that we have to minimize our risk by having money. That's a good reminder.
You want to add anything to it, or? I mean, I would add, Bank of Milburgh, if we, if you wanted to add something, we have two of our.
I wouldn't add anything. If somebody has a lower rate and we want to go with them.
We'll just add it then, okay.
But I think we do get some free stuff from M&amp;T, so I think, and we, I think we've been concentrating our stuff in M&amp;T on purpose, because we think we do get some stuff from there.
Okay, so all in.
That's interesting.
So all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One, and it's so moved. Item ten is a motion to appoint the town planner, which is, we have. Yeah, we just, so I want to see what we have here. Yeah, Planner's, Planner's East.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Michael, is this the same rates as previous?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item ten is a resolution appointing the consulting engineer, Tom Mannix.
Motion.
Second, any discussion?
Second, we need to determine, what we did last year was not to exceed $5,000. Do we want to plug in a certain cap?
We need, we need an hourly rate and we need a cap.
Well, it's the hundred dollars in the budgeted amount, but where he actually draws is from the capital projects.
Right.
Which, which varies. I don't think we spent anything on the.
We have, we've spent some money outside that.
I would stick with the $5,000 and each day at a hundred dollars.
I think we, I think we lowered the budget amount this year.
Yeah, whatever we lowered it, that's what I was saying with the budget.
To the budget amount, okay.
And it's a hundred dollars an hour.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we have it at $3,500. I think that's the amount.
Okay, so not to exceed.
Not to exceed the budgeted amount. It might be 25. We should check.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So moved.
Just a question, Bruce, does that mean, though, that if he's working on a capital project, that thirty-five does not apply?
Yeah.
Or does it?
It hadn't.
Oh, okay.
Because the thirty-five was based on what we had built into the regular budget, the planned items, which was the general fund and the highway.
Do you want the amount now? You want me to look it up, or?
Just, I mean, the not to exceed would be on any professional services. I, I think it's assumed that it's the budget amount with any professional services. I'm not sure why, the rate I agree with, you know, we should put the rate in, but the not to exceed.
Well, every year, we've always had a cap on his, what we're spending, so this year we're not.
I know, but we don't have the cap with everything else, so what, let's be consistent.
Yeah, we have a cap on.
Should all the other appointments say not to exceed the budgeted amount?
No.
So moved? Have we approved that yet?
We're, did we vote? Yes, we're done.
Okay. Okay. Item twelve, resolution appointing the planning and zoning consulting engineer, which would be Retaining Morris Associates for the year 2013. And I don't, wait, I do have a, you guys all have a schedule? Okay, so is there a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
A question, Michael, is this the same as previous?
Yes.
No, no increase?
Any further? All in favor, aye? You give me, you have something to say?
I, could you tell?
No, I'm not sure. I thought I heard something.
Michael, are you happy with their services? Is that something I can ask publicly?
Yeah.
You're happy with their services? Okay.
Okay. Any further? All in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item thirteen is a resolution appointing the planning and zoning attorney, which would be John Lyons, at a rate of $120 an hour. And he's volunteered a substantial amount of time for the town on a number of issues. I want to just mention that.
And he's still volunteering.
Yeah.
A lot of time.
Yeah.
I'm just reading, though, his letter here. The letter talks about $125.
He has $125.
Oh, he does?
Yes.
The M&amp;Net $225 an hour. Motion and second?
Motion.
Can we have a second first?
Is this the same letter as last?
Oh, second.
Second.
Is this the same letter as last year?
This is, this year.
Or if not, I would like to read it through.
It says 2010. It looks like it's the same letter as last year. The dates are.
It's consistent with 2011 and '12. That's a mistake, it's not a problem.
Do you want to vote on it?
I'm comfortable. I know it's the same. Yeah, I mean.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
At 125.
At 125.
At 125, yeah.
I abstain too, because at the expense, you know, we negotiated this year, last year.
I have no problem with the rate. I just want to make sure that we're not bound to use any attorney on anything, that we need complete discretion as to who we use for any legal matter. And I know that was put into previous retainer agreements. I just want to make sure it's carried forward.
Well, it's passed, and Joe, I'm sure will review it as well.
So moved?
You voted yes.
I did vote for it, yeah.
So that's, you got enough?
Item fourteen is a resolution to approve Geller &amp; Klein as the town attorney. Motion and second?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I think we're gonna hold this over if we could. I personally am pushing to make a change on that, and I have an interview I'd like to set up this coming week, and I think we should be able to make a decision by the next meeting.
What was their rate?
165.
Joe, you have any comments? I don't know what your interview is, because I haven't heard.
Well, I think there's been some changes at Geller in terms of staffing, so I think we do have to think through what we want to do with respect to representation. One of the attorneys who we did use is no longer at Geller.
Two attorneys.
Right, and I was gonna say, another one who we used on labor stuff from time to time is no longer there. So I, I think we ought to hold it over and think about what we want to do.
Now, the interview is with you, or with?
No, it's gonna, I'm gonna try and get the whole board, or as many as of us that can make it.
No, was this?
Joe may be able to join us on the telephone.
Is this, I didn't know about this, so.
Well, we have about six people who sent in applications, and most of them would not lower their rate.
Is this the ones from October 15th deadline? So the October 15th deadline attorneys, we're gonna do interviews for them?
Yes, for those who will lower their rate.
Well, I'm, I'm glad to be, I'm happy to be a member of the board, and, you know, I didn't know you were following through on this, so. By the way, I'm the supervisor, okay? So, thanks for letting me know about it, and.
Oh, I was gonna let you know as soon as.
Give me a date when you're doing the interview, is okay?
Happy to do it.
All right. So you guys want to hold over Geller &amp; Klein?
It's on here as a holdover.
Okay, sure.
It's on the agenda as a holdover.
So motion?
But not the resolution.
Right.
Resolution says continue.
Right.
Okay.
Are you part of that interview too, Bruce, or no?
I will be.
Okay, all right. Would you ask to be on it?
I was gonna let everyone know.
We're all in it.
So what do you want to do?
I think we should be able to make a decision by next meeting.
Well, we're gonna hold.
Whether we make it by the next meeting or not, what difference does it make? We went a whole year without having an official attorney ever voted last year, so. I don't think there's any magic to next meeting when we're ready to come up with what we want to do, bring it up.
So we're not voting on this resolution?
Well, we got to have a lawyer.
No, I would defer. Well, we would continue to use Geller until we decide not to.
Say what?
Are you, are you happy with the resolved, this resolution?
Until further notice, it says.
On an as-needed basis?
On an as-needed basis. Yeah, I think we can pass this resolution, but with the understanding that we are gonna interview attorneys and decide what we want to do.
Okay.
I mean, Tom, in fairness, we have talked about our tax sorcery, you know.
Absolutely. But I, I didn't.
Our attorney's gone.
I wasn't aware of interviews happening next week.
Oh, well.
That's news to me.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's news to you, but it is news to me, so.
I don't think, has anything been scheduled?
No, no, of course not. And the minute it is, everyone will know.
I hope we'll be considering our schedules ourselves, and we can comply with the, you know, agree on a date for these things, so.
I hope so.
All right.
Everyone that can make it will make it, I'm sure.
All right, so we are holding over Geller &amp; Klein as we always have, at a rate of 165 an hour. Motion and second. I'll just redo this whole thing.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is that clear enough? Item fifteen is a resolution approving the renewal of the EAP contract. That's the Employee Assistance Program, that's the.
Testing.
Right. Motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And did this fee stay the same? Does anyone know? Eight hundred dollars for the year?
I don't know.
I can ask Shelley. She's back there.
We have the fire contracts, but I think, did we approve these already? Do you know, John?
I don't think so.
No? All right. Item sixteen is a motion approving the fire department contracts. That's, those are on tab seventeen.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on those?
Are these the same as last year?
These are the same as what we discussed in our budget hearings. These are the amounts and.
These contracts are signed, by the way, already.
They've been done.
One of them, Tom signed one of them. I don't remember why. That's probably my mistake.
Elizabeth, I understand the dollar amounts you're saying are in the budget, but do we know if any of the boilerplate language has changed? And do you know, is there any changes in language?
Fortunately, I wasn't involved in the scenario this year. So, very, very bad, sorry for the pain. I would hope that it was negotiated with the village government in regards to the fire department, at least. As far as Hillside and Brinkford is concerned, I was, I would, I would hope that commissioners were involved in the negotiation process.
Would it make sense to hold this over, and then maybe John can tell, tell us if it's exactly the same contract as last year?
We had, we had the hearing day on the budget, and Hillside was here for that. But the other two are not.
I think Tom signed one of these contracts already.
It was the Hillside one that they were here for, right.
And you've gone over it with everyone, and.
We were here for that.
Yeah.
They were here for that.
Yeah.
During the budget, right. Yeah.
So you're confident and.
Oh, they're, they're the same. We didn't approve, we didn't.
We didn't change anything.
Increase at all, no?
Well, we hope you didn't change anything. Question is, does somebody actually reads it?
I don't, I, I just don't, I don't think that this is something we, the clerk should be responsible for. I'll just say that.
Can we get a high school kid to do it?
Appropriately, we need to ask if, in fact, the bond or truck was involved with the, as well as the ambulance?
Well, the ambulance was not, because it was bought.
Right.
We, we cut the ambulance out, but there is, I think, another year or two obligation with the truck for $9,000. And that was agreed upon in '06 or '05 or some.
Okay, so the bond is there.
Right.
I'm a little concerned about the fact that the ambulance was cut out because.
It was bought, yeah.
It was bought, however, the expenses for the ambulance and the ambulance service continued to.
Right.
Will continue.
Right, right.
So the fact that that $7,500, as I, I think I'm right, is a $7,500 was cut out.
I think it was 35, Wayne. I, I think. I don't think it was.
I think the reason is 75 last year.
Okay.
Because that expense obviously will continue, because they obviously have to keep continuing to purchase their equipment.
Isn't it as simple as?
The cost of the ambulance is done, but I'm concerned that you cut out $7,500. Again, I, I wasn't involved in that scenario, so I can't.
Is it as simple as calling the fire chiefs and asking them if this was the same contract that they submitted last year?
Why don't we just hold it over till the next meeting? Is that, is that?
I'm gonna ask Jim, because Jim, I guess, is the signatory on the village one. Do you know if it's the same form as?
There's no changes to the contract whatsoever.
No changes, so it is the same form.
Contract will roll over and be in place as of one last year. Okay, so the fact that you tell me that the $7,500 for the ambulance is cut out concerns me.
Right, well, let's hold it over then, okay? Let's find out. I think.
Well.
I mean, is that $7,500 based on, I don't know if you all recall, when I was here last year and we talked about it at the budget scenario, I explained to you in depth how important that $7,500 was, not just for the cost of the ambulance, what was, it was the cost of the equipment.
Right.
As we go forward, to bolster the scenario in regard to the ambulance services that we provide to our commuters. So the fact that you said that was cut out.
I, I believe it was, because I'm putting it in this scenario with the truck, that the truck, that this thing was paid off. We'll have to review it and go over it, okay?
The truck's still here for $9,000.
Yeah.
You have the.
That bond is in place, obviously, so that doesn't go away. But the fact that, if in fact you took the $7,500 out of that budget, you know, that, I'm not so sure that, that would need to be negotiated. I mean, these, these guys, the cost of the ambulance is simply not the cost of the ambulance, Tom is probably well aware.
Right.
And Wayne, that would only be in the village of Ryndick's fire department contract, is that correct?
No, not, no, because the, the, the town of Ryndick, the village of Ryndick provides a significant amount of service to the town.
No, but I mean, I, I mean, the, of the, of our three contracts, that would only be applicable to one of the three, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
But you have not only, you have a county protector district.
Right.
That, that, that the ambulance service.
Got it.
The fire protection district is the, the fourth district, then.
I think, in fact, I mean, it's been determined that most of the calls are in the town anyways, with the ambulance.
You mean in the, in the village?
At your budget meeting, I explained to you the significance of.
That, that vehicle runs more in the town than it does in the village.
Right, and.
Not just, not Ferncliff, but.
Okay.
So I would be very concerned with the fact that you cut out that $7,500. I hope that didn't happen.
Tom, will you review these with our attorney, or how will you handle it?
Well, let me see what Shelley has, and then we'll look into it.
I would, I would say that the $7,500 cannot be cut out of the contract without negotiating that with the village.
Right.
It's a valid contract.
Okay, we'll follow up on it.
Well, I'm assuming we didn't generate this contract.
That's correct.
Contract was generated last year, signed by myself and the supervisor.
Right, so.
And that contract cannot be changed without negotiation.
Correct.
We'll hold this over then. We'll hold this over then.
Can we, can we-
We don't have the same scenario with the other fire departments, so, just so you know. So, except for the village fire department, we'll approve Hillside and Rhine Cliff. Motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye? We'll hold that over till next meeting. Okay, John?
It was cut out.
Was it?
It's not in here.
It, it was cut out.
See, what concerns me is that you were, you were considering the cost of the ambulance. I mean, you still have to service the ambulance.
We amended, approved it in 2012, but it wasn't even-
Right.
Input in 2013.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wait, we, we, I hear you, Wayne, thank you.
Good point, glad you're here. So, we'll follow up with it.
Hillside and Rhine Cliff are approved.
So, you'll make a note that we have to look at our budget to make sure that we're-
So, Hillside and Rhine Cliff are approved.
Hillside and Rhine Cliff are approved. We have to either amend the budget. This is not a signed contract by either municipality, so we'll just follow up on it. Okay? Yeah.
Sixteen.
All right, so, item 17 is a resolution approving the Village of Rhine Beck police contract, and that's on tab 18. And-
Tom, did you receive a letter from Lisa on that?
We have, we have a renewal of the contract for 2013, substantially the same as 2012.
Exactly, except for the mileage.
The mileage.
The mileage figure had changed and had to be modified.
Okay.
So, what is the mileage change to?
Bruce, what is the, um-
I never saw it.
I didn't either. I didn't either.
So, it's going up or down?
Up.
I believe it would up.
Is our budget the same as last year on that?
No, what if we, on the, on the ambulance or the police?
No, on the police.
Yeah, police stayed the same.
All right, so, the police budget, we have budgeted the same as last year. Whether or not the fees are different is a whole different story, but, um, okay.
The only, the only change that we have is the police has changed the total mileage for mileage increase.
Okay. Let's have a motion and second on that first.
Motion?
And then, any, any discussion?
There is no contract attached, so what we're approving is what was approved last year.
Exactly, except for the mandated change for mileage by the state, which would be nothing we can do about anyways, is what we're changing.
Do we have a sense of how much that's gonna change our budget?
It won't be much.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, we don't have to change the budget.
It won't change our budget at all.
You're telling them to drive less?
It won't be, yeah.
Why are you laughing?
They, they drive as much as you expect them to.
Yeah.
Depending on the hours.
Yeah. They keep, he keeps below budget and, you know, it's a bargain, because, you know, it's a gift.
I totally agree.
So, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. So, appointments on tab number 19 include items 18 through 37. Essentially, these are appointments like the record manager, the tax collector, the just reappointments from last year, nothing new. So, I'll have a motion and second to approve items 18 through 37.
Motion.
Second.
And any discussion on any of those?
Although our clerk is new.
Uh, 37. Just one page over, 37. Just the committees, the-
Yes.
Board of Directors, so on and so forth.
I'm sorry, we're, we're going through, we're still being inspected.
Right. Through the other page to item 37.
And who's going to be the chair? Oh, Bob Ellsworth staying on his chair for Thompson.
Anybody one more time, or?
Yeah, just- On the conservation advisory board, Donaldson on there.
He's, he was appointed, he's not being reappointed because he was appointed last year for two years. I checked my, my boards.
Now, the budget, finance, and control committee, didn't we discuss disbanding that until we get the audit back? For making it inactive? It's basically non-functioning?
I didn't discuss that. Did I discuss it? Did you guys discuss it?
I, I can't hear you.
You guys discussed disbanding the board, the finance and-
The budget, finance, and control, it was sent in the email that Joe sent to you. I don't know if you read the email.
The email.
We disbanded, there is no functioning one, and indeed, we do it ourselves.
And same thing with the Rhine Cliff advisory.
I spoke that since I'm the liaison to Rhine Cliff, I followed up on all of my boards. Rhine Cliff is not active right now, they don't wish to be active. I spoke to Pam about it. It's my recommendation that we not dissolve the committee, that we leave the structure in place so that we don't have to redo a resolution and we make it inactive in case we need to charge them with something. It's, it's there. They're, they've fulfilled, they started because of the comp plan and concerns of, you know, the TND within the hamlet and the drainage issues came later. So, it's my recommendation that it be made inactive with the resolution in place until a time, if we want to charge them to do anything or, or they need to become active again.
All right.
And I agree with the same thing with the budget and finance.
Well, I got the email. It's the meeting that you and Joe and Elizabeth had a meeting on to talk about these things. I, I wasn't part of that meeting, and I don't think they were in a town board meeting, so.
Well, it's a caucus.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you guys had your own meeting, it's unlawful, but-
No, it's not.
You, you talked about town business at a meeting?
As a caucus, we can democratic caucus about, uh-
Disbanding committees? Okay.
It's a caucus. The Senate does it, the Congress does it, and the county government does it.
You guys talked about structuring committees for the town, and it's not open meetings?
That's why we're talking about it.
Well, we are now.
You check with the, the, was it Bob Freeman? See what advice he gives.
Okay, all right, I will. So, so what are you doing? You're disbanding it or not?
We're making it inactive, is my suggestion.
So, we need a motion for this.
Well, we, during the budget process, we talked about having a budget, it was raised by someone in the public about having a budget committee to advise us on the budget, and within our budget workshops, there was no interest and it was said that that's our duty. Is that correct?
That was what Joe said. Yeah, I remember that. I, I don't agree, but-
Have you met with this committee at all over the last year?
No, I, the, the committee hasn't been active in the last couple of years, and there were some reasons why it wasn't active. The, the, but the committee came up with the updates to the procurement, came up with the ethics law, came up with the investment policy, came up with the audit of, of the financial office processes, came up with a whole bunch of different things. And then it kind of went by the wayside. It's time to revisit some of those things based on the controllers. I agree with you that it should be inactive right now, but I don't believe that it should be disbanded.
I totally agree, so that's all I said, was making it, make it inactive. That was what I suggested.
And, and I'm, I'm fine with that, because we have nothing to charge them with right now.
Okay.
But I'm not fine with, they should just go away, because that's what we do, because that isn't what we do.
No, that isn't what I said.
No, no, but that, that was what was said.
So, what we would not do is-
I'm fine with doing all of these except for the budget and finance, which I would like to designate as inactive.
So, you want to abolish it, or?
No, just make it inactive. When we have something to charge them with, then we appoint people.
Because I'm reading the email, it says abolish, so, so, okay, so, there's, needs to be a motion and a second to what you want to do.
Okay. I motion that, that we approve the following, as you suggested, with the exception of the budget and finance and control committee, which will be named inactive at this point until such time as we need them, like when the, like when the audit comes through. Or we need to charge them with something. Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Now, are we taking a motion to make the RAC inactive?
It's not on here, because it is inactive.
But we just took a motion to make another committee inactive.
It's, just a point of clarification. I have it as a vote to approve resolutions 201, 318 through 201, 336.
I don't know what that means.
Well, items-
I can't even hear him, so.
Well, it's 3101-
I have it as a motion to approve items 18-
Through 37.
Through-
37.
Well, through 37 with the exception of 36, pulling 36 out of that.
Well, making it inactive, it's not abolishing it, it's making it inactive, which I don't know, you know.
Yeah, what, what John's saying is if we don't, if we don't vote on it, then it's the same as RAC. Is that what you're saying?
I'm, I'm just saying that, that you're, you're voting to approve-
You have a block of things.
A block of resolutions, and any resolution that you want to take on its own, you pull out of that block.
Then we'll pull that out and do it separate.
Okay, so that's pulled out, so everything else in items 18 through 37 are approved. Right?
Right.
Okay. So, and, and then whatever your vote is on item 36, is that okay?
Yes.
Sure.
And John, when you say through 37, I just, is the last one we're approving is appointment to recreation committee?
Yes.
That's the last one?
Yes. And then, does Elizabeth need to make a motion about the Rhine Cliff advisory council?
There's nothing before you about that?
Okay, got it.
Okay, so then, what's the, what's the motion with respect to the budget?
I make a motion that we label it as inactive until such time in the future we need to task them, so.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Just to revisit the RAC, Pam Richardson, our attorney, advised me that there was no procedure adopted for the purpose of dissolving the committee, so that we could not put it on the agenda and it would be inactive. There are no members in it right now. So, that's why it's not on the agenda.
I don't think we have any members in the other one.
No, we don't.
Okay.
All right, so, moving on to item 38, is resolution appointing the town board liaisons, which is your tab 20. Motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, this, I, I disagree with. Yeah, I don't understand why you're appointing me to the zoning board of appeals. I haven't done that before, Gina has.
I wish it continued.
It's new to me, and I got enough to do with affordable housing, which is gonna be very active.
You like, you want it?
Rather historic.
You're good with that?
I like it.
Okay. So, at this, well, any, further, anything else?
Well, the other thing for me is I think Gina, or somebody else wanted waterfront committee.
I'm willing to help you on that. Or, I mean, I'll take that if you don't want it, Joe, and to give you a break on that, Bruce, if you want.
Yeah, I mean, the, the issue with waterfront committee is they have an active grant that they're driving.
Okay.
And they're really focused on it, and they need somebody to work with them that's gonna be active.
Okay, can I call on you for help when you need it?
Yeah.
So, we're moving from Joe to Gina, both ZBA and waterfront committee?
Go ahead.
I guess.
You're taking the building department away from me. I have worked with Ed, I've worked on the fee schedule. It does involve, from time to time, legal issues or things that a lawyer could be helpful. So, I, I would propose that I keep the building department.
I'm basing these based upon comments from board members. I'm just, Bruce has been a senior board member, and I just think he had an interest in that. So, we think that's what the move is made for.
Bruce, why in particular interested in building department?
It's diversifying his past experience and-
Well, I, to be honest with you, I've been thinking, based on your note from today, why do we have liaisons to officials and, and boards? I, I disagree with the, the lawyer qualification part of it, because future town boards are not necessarily gonna have attorneys on them. And I, I don't think that's the right thing. I, but I have been pondering whether it really makes sense to have liaisons to some committees and, or some boards and, and whether we're influencing or interfering with them. I thought you made a reasonable argument that if they have an issue, they can bring it to the board, and they should. So, I, I am concerned about that, but on the same point, I think boards need a focal point to be able to go to when they need help. And I'm not necessarily sure that that's a liaison. So-
Let me tell you why I think for building you do need a liaison. We decided that fees ought to go up. Well, somebody had to put that together to ask the building inspector to do a comparison of our fees with other towns to come up with something. What I did is implement it, had it typed up and presented it to the board. So, a liaison can serve that function. With respect to a lawyer, you may not have a lawyer in the future, but you might as well utilize what you have now. From time to time, questions come up where the building inspector feels he's being hoisted. Somebody to talk to as to whether he is being horsed around when he should go to John Lyons, where it's worthwhile to spend money. So, I, I do think you want a liaison to, um, with the building department. Again, same thing with planning, but again, the liaison should never express an opinion on a particular issue. That is for the board, that is for the building inspector, that it's their decision, not a liaison decision. But I would like to continue with the building.
I also think that the ethics board should be not one person assigned to that. I think that should be an arms-length committee that is allowed to work on their own with all of this weighing in on assignments to it and appointments to it.
Yeah, that's, that's, I agree with that. I think as a liaison, I wouldn't, I think if they, if they need to convey information back to the board, that's just like the planning board and the zoning board, they're an autonomous authority and they, there should be no input by anybody from the board of how to act or what to think, but, so, it's sort of an arms-length type of a liaisonship, and really, I wouldn't, I wouldn't attend anything unless they, just let them know to, you know, where the communication channel would be, basically. That's what that is for, in my mind, for the ethics board.
And the first draft that I was, Tom, too, I thought I was reassigned to cemetery. Is that correct?
Well, I, I was gonna stay on, just to finish a few things, but are you interested in it?
Yeah, I'm kinda like that. But I, one thing I don't see on here is rec, and I think that's gonna be an issue.
Well, rec is the issue. I've talked about it with a couple of yous, and I wanna see who's, who's up for the par on that. Well, rec is the issue. I've talked about it with a couple of yous, and I want to see who's up for the par on that. And so, I'm looking for volunteers for rec. If anybody wants to be the rec liaison by, I think it's by town resolution that you're actually the chair of the committee. So, there are a lot of rules with recreation, you have to attend. You can't miss more than three meetings or you're off, and you got to run the meeting, so, anybody want to talk about that? Because I haven't, I didn't lay it out on here, I wanted to leave it up to you guys and talk about it and see who's interested.
Well, I spoke to Bruce about it, and I was concerned that he is the, he has the most knowledge about how it runs, and it is very complex, and he's done a fantastic job with it. I can see why he wants a break. I'm hesitant to volunteer for it because I don't know that I could do the job that he does. I told him I'm willing to help him if he wants to stay on it, but then, then I was thinking, who's got the most youngest kids? Mine are all grown, and I think whoever's got the youngest and most numerous children-
Well, if I weren't here, it might work, but it's not working. There's a lot, Bruce has built that program up substantially. I hate to see anything lost that he's made on it.
I agree.
So, and I don't know who could keep up with it, but it's a strong committee, and it's a tough job. But there's got to be a channel of communication.
You know, basically, this is a hard decision for me. I've done it for five years. We've gone through a tremendous amount of growth. We've got it where it's, the programs are self-supporting now, where they were heavily subsidized before. It's still the most affordable game in town. But you get stale, and you get, it's a tremendous amount of activity in a few months. You bring 50, 75 people on and do stuff in a few months, and you can't please everybody. And, you know, frankly, I think it's a misunderstood part of the budget. You and I have talked today. You know, people think that the budget includes the library. They forget that it's $260,000 for the library is in the Culture and Rec budget. They forget that the $150,000 is buildings and grounds in there. There's like nothing, there's very little left for recreation, and yet, it's, you know, and as I've told you today, I feel like I go through more aggravation to get anything done with rec compared to other things, and maybe it's me. But, you know, I'm tired, and I'm not tired of rec, I'm very proud of rec, but I'm tired of, I think the way it's been treated.
Can we support you better as a project?
I don't know, I don't know. I mean, if you don't understand, if you don't have a reason to go to the activities once in a while, if you don't have a reason to, you know, the concerts or something, it was a real eye-opener to me when the events coordinator came in here and the questions that the board asked. It's, rec is something that improves the quality of life in Reinbeck. I was talking to Sue Crane today up in Red Hook, she's the supervisor up there, and she said, "You have a huge program." You know, and for her to recognize that Little Reinbeck has a huge program is, I was talking about the dog park, though, but, you know, we were talking about the other things. It's, I just, I think maybe it's better for the town if I don't do it this year. Then I take a year off, and it's a lot of work, there's no question about it. It's a tremendous amount of work. And there's a good committee, they have some good ideas, it's, but, again, it's, you know, it's, I think it's not getting the representation that it needs, the positive, whatever the word is, image that it deserves. And I think maybe somebody else should do that, so.
Bruce, I think you, as far as I'm concerned, I think you've done a very good job. I have driven by and even stopped at summer concerts on the hill by the rec area. It was here on Saturday night for part of a concert. So, your efforts really are appreciated. We know that a lot of work is involved. And when you're dealing with a lot of people, there's a lot of aggravation. And the fact that at budget time, we want to cut, we want to cut everything if we possibly can. But I certainly have not heard any criticisms of the content of the rec program. Certainly, I just follow your recommendations.
Well, let me give you one of the examples, the refund policy. Gina and I talked about that. We went through four iterations of the rec refund policy. On other things, we've been able to sit, work it out, two of us get together, wordsmith it, and we move on. That took three months, four months to do. It was a minute thing, but it's something, it's like, and I'm venting, I'm sorry for people at home. The skate park, skate park, we created a capital plan over a year ago. We still don't have a skate park capital plan. So, the money that's been put into the skate park is losing interest. Now, I know it's tiny amount of interest.
Why don't we have a capital plan?
Because there's more than just the board supporting rec. There's other facets in the town that don't support rec. And so, I'm getting tired of that. I'm getting frustrated by it, and it just doesn't seem like a good use of anybody's energy if somebody else can make it go smoother. I'm all for efficiency.
No, I just don't think that there's anyone that could make it go smoother than you, Bruce.
Bruce is done.
But the town should not be dependent on Washburn for recreation. The town should be, it should be, there was nobody there that taught me how to do it when I came in, and we went through a lot of issues. People either, I mean, we're talking about stuff, we're arguing about whether we have our name with stuff, and this is a tremendous amount of work. Some of these other things you meet once, twice a year. But we're going to argue about those things. But the thing that's the most amount of work is, I'll say that with any of these things, people aren't willing to step up to. And if you help me do it, if you're more positive towards it, if you promote it, if you contribute in a positive way, but if you don't know anything about it, then you're no help to the program. And I don't think the board knows anything about it, and so that's me. I'm not educating you somehow, but-
Wait, you know, I'm going to interrupt here because we all have different interests, you know?
Yeah.
And I've spent a tremendous amount of time trying to get this town hall compliant with technology and the website, and we're part-time, almost volunteer board, yet the amount of time, I know you spend a phenomenal amount of time. I'm working almost, you know, full-time at this job, so it's hard to carry a torch and be enthusiastic about every single aspect. We can't, you know? We have families, we have to make money other ways. 25 hours a week, 30 hours a week spent on town board business is a lot of time for who we are and what we're elected to do. And speaking for myself, I'm honored, you know, and happy doing it, but you can't pay attention to everything, Bruce, that's why we need to split it up.
And Bruce, also, I'm a huge fan of rec, and all of my kids did go through it and utilize it. And there were years of my life that I was there all summer, every summer, for an extended period of time. And it is a tremendous program, it's a great asset for our town, it's a great complement to our town that we're able to supply that for our residents. And maybe you haven't gotten the support, both vocally and visibly, that you deserve from the board, and maybe that filters down to the public as well, but maybe we can change that. I mean, I'm willing to help.
He's burnt out, he needs a break.
Well, let me suggest this. If Bruce is willing to continue, perhaps we can donate either Gina or Tom to help him, and we can sit on both of them. Would you be willing if somebody else steps forward, Bruce, and adds to work with you?
Putting a lot of pressure on him in a public situation, it's-
Look, we're not going to resolve the whole liaison tonight anyway, so I think-
Yeah, we're not, but, you know, I've run out, you know, after five years, you get, you kind of figure out where things work and things don't work, and you also figure out that, as an example, we have a pool house that is, the foundation of it is rotting away, and we've known that for years, all right? And in this environment, we're not going to spend money on fixing that pool house. But, you know, it's something we need to do. Now, we have to start prioritizing, well, I'm going off into intergalactic, but we need to maintain that infrastructure as well as the roads and the boiler, which is going, we all know that. So, you know, it's got to get its fair shake, and we've been cutting it like crazy. I don't know of any other place that's been hacked that, you know, has been cut back so much, and yet it's continued to grow. You know, we added an extra week of camp. We added different programs, we've diversified, we've done a bunch of different things, and we brought in more revenue. And so, you've got an improving business trend, you know, cost of expense, cost of revenue thing, and I want to see that someplace else. I want to see that in other departments, and I don't want to spend all my time in something like this. That's why I'd like to work someplace else, be involved in something else, to get the efficiency going there, because some things just seem to be slowly growing.
Is that infrastructure for the pool house in the capital improvement plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, there's more to it, there's much more. There's the physical aspects of it, and then there's the programmatic part of it. The, you know, it's a lot, and I just don't think that-
You know-
The rest of the board understands that, so.
This board, we-
Comment from the floor, appropriate or not?
Sure.
Well, not right now.
No?
Not after the board's done with it, yeah. You were saying something?
Saying that we're, you know, we're a part-time board, we're all functioning as portion of a town manager here, and we do a tremendous amount of work, and it's- Bruce is out mowing fields, Joe's writing local laws and resolution, he got our affordable, you know, workforce housing thing off the ground. It's a tremendous, it's not just attending two meetings a month, it's attending two meetings a month and working on, you know, four or five huge side projects. So, I-
Well, like, as an example, the dog park law, right? That was one. I'm not an attorney. I lifted that from LaGrange, I'm shameless with that. We worked on it, and we sent it over to Pam for final review, okay? Now, there's no support here for that, the-
What do you mean, there's no support? I don't understand what you mean.
We're doing those things, we're doing the stuff that would normally be done by somebody else.
By it.
The board voted in favor of it, and-
Yeah, yeah, but I'm on Elizabeth's point, that we're doing all these different things. We're generalists, we'll jump in any place. And all I'm trying to tell you is, I'd like to see somebody else jump in on the rec one, because it's a pretty deep tool.
We can't even find citizens to come forward and populate our committees, so, you know, maybe things, you know, if you're trying to build the pavilion as a barn raiser and no one comes forth to barn raise with you, are you going to do it by yourself?
You did.
Well, I mean, the new pavilion.
Oh, the new pavilion, yeah.
You know? I mean-
All right, shall we, you want to wrap this up tonight with this, or hold it over?
Yeah, I think we have to hold it over. Just one suggestion, I do think we need a liaison for the transfer station. Although we privatized it, we do need somebody looking at that and having the operator come in to see if we can get the extra day.
Joe, you want that?
So, you would take the Buildings and Grounds connection that's responsible for that, that takes care of it, and, you know, routinely coordinates with them on snow removal, dumping and things like that? You would take that away from me?
No, not at all.
Is that where you're going?
Indeed, I was going to suggest that you stay with the transfer station, because you're the most knowledgeable.
Well, the definition of the Buildings and Grounds includes that.
Oh, okay, I didn't, that passed me by, that's fine, if that's part of it, then we don't have to add liaison.
Okay, so we'll assign the mayor to Recreation as the liaison to the, it's Kenyon Mayor.
The mayor?
Yeah, he's in the back.
Thanks, Jim.
We'd be better equipped.
All right, so we'll hold over rec till next meeting.
Well, I'm happy with all my assignments, so thank you, and-
Okay, is there any further, anybody else, by the way?
Well, have we made any changes? Do we have to direct anything to the clerk? I mean, there seems to have been a little swapping here. Did you get it?
I think he's got that.
A lot of front and zoning is going to be to me.
Right, and hopefully, building is coming back to me, the Building Department.
Well, I don't know, was that agreed upon, or?
We talked about it.
Is there, well-
Again, we're holding it over, subject to further discussion among interested parties.
So, we'll keep Building Department and Recreation held over, how about that?
I didn't hear what you said.
We're holding over Building Department and Recreation.
Right, and what about Safety Inspection is the, okay, that's Building Department.
Well, that's, yeah.
Zoning Enforcement, the ZEO, Gina, you-
That's currently, I've been doing that.
Right.
We've had quite a few meetings with different issues.
Right, I think Gina ought to stay with that.
Okay, are-
Do you have concerns about it, Bruce?
I think there's some issues that are going to be popping, right? They're more personnel-related. Are you comfortable with those? Okay.
Genie, you've got a lot on your plate.
Well, I'm trying to take Waterfront to give Bruce some, and my other ones are not, you know, very time-demanding.
Waterfront isn't either. It's one meeting a month, three or four weekends a year.
So, I'm okay with taking that over for you, if that's helpful for you.
Fine.
All right, any further? All right, so motion and second, Recreation and Building Inspector are held over till the next meeting, okay? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Okay, moving on to, oh, do you have a comment?
We're going to change, just like zoning, Board of Appeals, that's going back to Gina.
You wanted that, huh? Do you want that?
That's just what I have now.
Yeah. All right. You have all that, right, John?
I didn't get the zoning Board of Appeals.
That will return to Gina. You want that, right?
Yeah.
Oh, that, oh, that I got, yeah, yeah, I got that. Waterfront and Z E O, yeah, I got that.
Okay.
And Z E O.
And Z E O? Okay.
That's just what I have now.
All right.
Could you send out a draft, John, as to where we think we are?
Item nine for the, thirty-nine is a resolution approving the petty cash funds. So, that's on tab twenty-one.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item forty is the salary schedule for 2013, and that's tab twenty-three, twenty-two.
Motion, second.
Any discussion on that?
I checked it, and to the best of my ability, it, it looks correct.
I sent an inquiry to Shelley about the webs or the...
It's part of the deputy clerk's salary, is my understanding.
But the cemetery clerk and the sewer clerk are not part of the office manager's salary. So, I don't understand the logic...
But she does it.
Of not combining them.
Well, I, I don't either, but she does the duties.
Right. So, they should be listed with the person, with the primary position, I believe.
Do you want to make, amend this to that?
Well, I, I think there's an, I, I think people need to know that, you know, there's...
What her total salary is?
Yeah. I, I think people are entitled to know that, and I, I think people don't realize that of the, all these two pages of positions, there's only...
Four people.
Well, yeah, there's many less people than, than it looks like here.
Sixty-eight, thirty-nine, fifty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Motion and second?
Motion, second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, let me, I'm just going to say, I'm going to abstain on all of these, because I haven't had a chance to read the vouchers.
Any further?
I had some questions, and I didn't get a chance to see the response on why some of them...
I, I saw the response on your question about why escrow isn't posted to the year it was incurred in, but the year it was billed, because that's how the OSC states it, and there's no separate code for it. So, it is coded when we pay it, not when we, it's all escrow stuff. It's not actual, it's not broken out from escrow. So, if it's an escrow cost, we account for it when we pay for it, not when we incur the...
Okay, what about the ones that weren't escrow?
Then they should be accounted for...
When we pay them.
I believe so.
Okay.
I wrote a little note to you on the folder. I spoke to Shelley about it and wrote you back.
So, I don't know whether that's been adjusted, so I'll abstain, and I'm also abstaining, because I don't know whether we have the revenue for, to support these budgets.
Any further? So, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And two abstained? So moved.
Just to go back, Bruce raises a point. I'm assuming, Tom, you know we have the revenue to cover these?
As far as last month's report?
Okay.
Right. The problem is, you know, I don't have December's report yet, so, you know, I'm not getting much turnaround on reports, so, trying to get them faster, but the story for the past five years is the same.
Well, I'm voting on this because...
We have to pay them.
It's like debt ceiling.
Right, exactly, exactly. And I'm in the same scenario with you, so, read upon. Item forty-two is a resolution approving abstracts one A vouchers V sixty-nine through V eighty, in the amount of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-two cents.
Motion.
Second.
And, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, as well.
Okay, two abstains, so moved. Item forty-three is a resolution approving preliminary capital projects abstracts for three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, and that's it, tab twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to vote yes for this one, because I like this one. Everything looked good there.
So moved.
Three items.
Item forty-four is a revolution, a revolution, a resolution approving the budget transfers and amendments, as described in tab twenty-six documents.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And that is so moved. Okay. Item forty-five, motion approving the maintenance department's contracts. Motion and second?
Motion.
A second.
Any discussion on that?
I'll, I'll just explain it. Bobby and Rochelle went through and pulled all the, the contracts and the bids that they've done for the year, and we just have, they picked the lowest bidder, and, and so we have to approve contracts.
Okay, just looking at it, I see this dock project of four thousand dollars. I wonder if that is going to change now that the highway department has purchased a big trailer.
Well, there's a number here by the Town of Reinbeck Highway Department. It's less, it's half, less than half.
I think he just gave you the bids.
Yeah.
Here, look.
I think he just gave you the bids on this.
I think this is what he's referring to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, you're, 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 we would go with the highway department on this?
Yeah, as long as they can have the equipment to do that. See, their, their problem is, they have to buy this twenty-five-hundred-dollar trailer...
Which we approved. It was in today's vouchers.
As, for that, and then they have to be available when the tides are right, and they're going to have to get another backup.
Did we get a commitment for that?
No, but, you know, I'm fine with this, as long as it's the lowest bid.
Okay.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item forty-six is a resolution approving the town hall use applications for the March...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
St. Patty's Day, they're having a great meeting.
Yeah, and also, oh, wait.
And the Ford's blood drive.
Yeah. Do we have two dates for that, John? What's the March twen, what's January twenty-fifth is one?
January twenty-fifth is the blood drive, I think.
Okay, and then, Vegetarian Society is March seventeenth, so there's two on here. Motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that's so moved. Tab, we have forty-seven and forty-eight, we can approve as a group, the resolution approving the tax certiorates for the name, the mentioned names. Motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
I don't know that we have any discussion on it out here, so all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Item forty-nine is a resolution approving the health insurance for the former town clerk. Apparently, she is now able to collect as gold, MVP, wait, she's MVP gold, but there's no MVP gold down there, so there's no kind of a reimbursement for her to...
As it was explained to me, she turns sixty-five and becomes eligible for Medicare next month, so she would switch over to MVP gold under our plan.
If she were here.
If she were here, but it doesn't cover people in Maryland, so they went out and found for her a different plan under A R P L, which is actually less than the MVP gold, and so this is authorizing that change.
And, and it wouldn't pay her directly, it would pay the provider?
Yeah.
As I understand.
Well, yeah.
I know that was one of the questions, is that we could do one of them, but, so we're approving to pay that provider that would, that would otherwise be MVP gold.
Can I just jump back one second? Because we had just voted on this tax cert case, but the actual letter from Gallatin Klein has it versus the Town of Wappingers. Do we need to have them approve that?
Well, let me, yeah.
The letter, there were a couple of mistakes in the cover letter, and Joan talked to Pam about that, but the, the actual information in the resolution is correct.
Okay, all right, good. But are they going to give us a corrected, or it doesn't really matter?
I can always get one.
Okay. All right, that's all, sorry. You can go forward now.
So, all in favor of approving the item forty-nine?
Aye.
All in favor, aye?
Was it a motion and second?
No, we need a motion, second. Oh, motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I'd like to go back to the recreation thing and forget everything I said there. I'd like to get cups for the town hall, for the water dispenser.
Do you don't have any in the garage, in the closet?
We have to do the...
I have a cup here. Want to use my cup?
Do you want to take a break? We need an annual accounting meeting, or are we pushing on through?
Well, we have items for discussion, so...
Oh, there we go.
Can we do a line?
Take a break?
Sure.
Five minutes?
Five-minute break.
A lot of real...
Shit. Run down to the B after that.
Do we have the other agenda?
Okay, we just have, we have a couple discuss, back into session, so we have a couple of items. That's the way how you open it up?
What's that?
That's how you open it back up. We talked about the town liability insurance thing. We approved that. Item, this is item G one, item two, and under G, condition of the town hall floor. Somebody?
A draft letter to be sent to the farmer's market. I'm told that the condition is better than left after the last farmer's market, but I do think we should go on record with the farmer. So, I would propose that the letter that I had sent to John to be signed by Tom actually be signed by Tom. Maybe you can add, John, a sentence to it saying, "We do note, however, that after the last farmer's market and put the date, the condition of the floor was better."
Would you like me to revise that?
They have a truck that backs up to the store, you know, even away, I know.
Yes, that's in the letter.
That was addressed as well.
The oil level's dropped across the country.
That's in the letter also.
And I guess it can't be, Bobby's been trying to clean it up, but he can't do it or something, so...
He's getting it up.
He's got cat litter down, he's been changing it, he wants it to dry it. Oh, Bruce knows all this.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you're including that, sure.
Let me just, let me just add one other thing. There was someone backed up again this Sunday, and Bobby drove by and saw it and came in and, and made everybody quite aware that that had to stop, so it wasn't only the last time, but it was this Sunday as well, so I don't think anyone, I, I think they'll pay more attention now, and we should get the letter out. But he was happy with the floor when I spoke to him this morning.
And if you, you look at the steps, the repairs that we did, we're going to have to redo them, because the mortar's all broken now.
That was the damage from the backup.
We're assuming so.
Yeah.
Oh, we think that...
Yeah, it's, you can see the separation. I was in here Saturday, and all of the chairs were gone, the lights were on on both sides of the stage, the fan was on, one of the lights was on, and the back door was unlocked. And I didn't realize that the back door was unlocked. I got a phone call later at home through Jeff that the people had put up the artwork were concerned that the town hall was unlocked, so I came back and locked it. But it was somebody with a key unlocked the, the back and left it.
Do you think that was the farmer's market?
I, I have no idea. I, I have no idea, but it was somebody, I, I'm assuming that it cleaned, whoever cleaned out the chairs for whatever was going on, whether it was Saturday night or Sunday, and also the, the custodians room down there was, lights were on in there.
The, the farmer's market did come in on Saturday to set up for Sunday.
Okay, so that's probably, I, you know, I don't know for sure, though.
Well, I should say, they, they asked, they asked a victim. I assume they did.
No, I think maybe you ought to add a paragraph to the leg, you know, the floating letter, saying that this weekend, we are informed that people came in here Saturday, they left lights on, and they left the door open. This is not acceptable.
And the, and the steps need to be redone because of the backing up?
Well, that's a different issue. If we got to redo it, I don't know why...
They're, they unload trucks, they back...
No, no, I, I understand that, but that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, if we incurred damage, then maybe we want them to pay.
We should just make them aware that, what, you know, did, did you confirm this with Bobby, or?
What? About the damage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And we need to, we need to know, notice, put them, notify them. We should mention it in the letter.
I think maybe we should send out a draft, a letter.
Do you want to, do you want to revise the draft, or do you want me to, instead of having John do it, and...
I can revise.
Why don't you revise it, and then we'll...
But look, on, on this, the steps, I am concerned about that, because we paid about two thousand dollars for that. Do you think that with the truck that bought that?
Did we have someone actually see it?
No, that, that's, I don't know, you know...
So, a couple people have seen trucks backed up the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, I, I'm just assuming that it had something to do with it, because nothing takes a big slab of bluestone or whatever that is and breaks it away from the mortar like, like that, without some kind of weight.
Now, is this...
Not me.
I don't weigh that much, either.
No, I'm getting there, but not quite.
We could put the whole, maybe we were out there for a town picture or something, and we, no.
Is this something we ought to inform our insurance agent of? Is this a...
We have a deductible.
Two hundred, twenty-five hundred.
Is twenty-five hundred as a deductible, plus this two thousand? Is this something that Bobby can do the cementing, or we have to have...
Need a mason.
Have to get Agon or somebody like Agon to do it.
Did Agon do it the last time?
Yeah.
Should we seek to hold farmer's market liable for it?
Let's, why don't we speak to Bobby again and, and look at it in the light of day and revise the letter and notice them if they're asking.
You're going to revise the letter, John?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Item three is affordable housing waiver for continuance in the event of foreclosure.
I'm sorry, what's the next one?
Affordable housing waiver in the event of foreclosure.
Oh, let's table that. There is an issue that the committee's to have to make some kind of clarification, but we're still trying to gather facts.
Okay, let, I got, let me just follow up with this Bank of Millbrook bond ban issue before I forget it, because I talked, we talked about the, the debt of the highway garage. We have a ban on the Hogs Bridge. The two debts that Reinbeck has are Hogs Bridge, which is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars last year, and this year, and we also have the highway garage, which is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And last year, we went to a ban for the bridge at one point two percent, which saved us a lot of money this year. And then, the highway garage is at four point eight percent, so, which we pay thirty thousand dollars every year in April. dollars every year in April. I talked to the executive vice president, Ron Mosca, about it, who, this is all in the hands of the Bank of Millbrook, about trying to convert it into a ban. He said it can't be done. He talked to his, the bank's attorney. We can't pay off the bond. We can't pay a bond anticipation note off with a ban. It would be unlawful, according there, to their attorney, if that makes sense to you. I mean, it makes sense to me, but it just can't be done, according to them. I didn't call our attorney, because I don't want to incur any costs without going further, so. But there is no cost to us to pay it off. There's no penalty. We have got, I think, four more years left. There's this year, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, at four-point-eight percent. We can pay it off if we wanted to, a hundred-and-twenty thousand, without penalty, save some substantial interest, or it's something to consider for the future, but, but as far as the conversion, it can't be done.
Can you pay it off and then take a ban?
You know, that's, it probably, I mean, I think, I did ask that, and I think it's possible. I think, I don't know if they would do it, but, I mean, it could be done. I believe. I mean, that's a, that's kind of a curious question, because we'd have to get a good interest rate in order to make it worth it for us to do it. Something to think about.
It's a hundred-and-twenty thousand?
Yeah, four-point-eight percent.
Why don't we wait until we see what the final year-end numbers are, before we spend any more time on this one? Because we might have money that we could...
We might have something coming from the state.
We might have money at the end of the year that we hadn't thought about, and we could use that to pay that off, potentially. But let's, let's wait till the number's a little more solid.
Yeah. And that's it. So, we can, if there's any public comment, we could open the floor to that, and if not, we can move into the accounting meeting. That's all right. So, motion and second to adjourn the reorganizational meeting.
So moved.
And to, a second?
Second.
And then, also to go into session for the 2013 accounting meeting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. So, resolution two-zero-one-three-oh-five-oh, accepting the departmental annual reports and adjourning for the annual accounting meeting. You have in your hands all the departments.
Motion.
Accepting the annual reports. Motion and second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And hereby adjourn and convene on January twenty-eighth, 2013, at the town board's regularly meeting to follow up with this? Is that correct, John? Sorry. Okay.
I have, I have a question. Are we supposed to audit these?
We can follow up finally, next meeting.
The next meeting, okay.
And so, we'll adjourn till that meeting for this, okay? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that's so moved. And motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. So adjourned.